No question? Okay, thank you. Item number two, hearing on a proposed ordinance rezoning one parcel of land containing 0.95 acres located on the northwest corner of Motley Drive and Old Retuncle Highway. It was recommended by the Planning Commission, patio garden homes. Anyone have any questions, comments? Go ahead, sir.
So is it patio homes, garden homes, or what? Are they?
It said patio garden homes.
So is that common walls?
No, they'll be detached. They're separate.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. All right, number three, hearing on a proposed ordinance rezoning one parcel of land containing seventeen point six acres located on the south side of Astley Road, approximately 1,000 feet east of the old Selma Road, Mag One to a residential adit couple. I think that's you, Ms. Graham. Anyone have any questions?
I just wanted to make sure I'm assuming when I was looking at the map, it looks like this is already the property they share own.
Can you hear me?
I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
A little better? Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding the map when I was looking at it. It looks like it's a piece of property they're already operating on, and it's just zoned in different spots for different zoning, and we're just trying to give it one zoning? Is that what we are?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I don't have no problem.
All right. Yes, sir.
I got a question.
Okay. Wait, Ms. Graham.
Go back to number one. Who? There were five lots in question, so we're just rezoning two?
Correct. They removed three of them during the Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, okay.
So it's only two.
Okay.
All right. You good, Ms. Graham?
I'm good.
All right. Item number four, resolution authorizing expenditure to public funds relating to manufacturing facilities for Man of Beverages and Ventures LLC. I think Chambers is here, wants to go into a special. I don't see him here, but I think they want to do it before, probably before they got here.
They're here in spirit.
Yeah, he's in spirit.
Yes.
All right, so we're handling that at that point. Item number five, a resolution revoking the business license for failure to pay taxes. Show calls here for Michael Passanua, Gus Italian Restaurant. Got any information on that?
Yes, he's, uh, he was put on a payment agreement earlier this year. He's defaulted on the payment agreement.
Okay. Handle that at that point. Any questions? Item number five. Item number six, application for a restaurant retail liquor license by Rocker Group LLC, Freeze Dacquere Bar.
Pro镇, I think this is my district with the new district maps. You, you might know more than, than I do. I don't have a problem with it as long as the daycare next door, we heard from the lady that runs the daycare a couple meetings ago. If that has been resolved and there's some understanding there, I'm not opposed to it.
Okay.
Uh, no. Okay. All right. Does have a concern, okay. There's some disturbances. We'll, uh, we'll let them, uh, we'll let them talk for us at the main meeting. And go from there.
Okay. We'll check that at that point.
Okay.
All right. Item number seven is an application for wine festival license by the City of Montgomery Department of Cultural Affairs. I guess we have a special event president sponsored that, so we'll handle that at that time. Chip, what, what is this gonna be all about? Do you know, Mr. Hill?
I do not.
We're asked at that time. Okay, thank you. Item eight, demolitions, nothing on that point, and some nuisance on item nine. Any questions from the council before we go to the public communication?
Well, I got one. I need to bring a resolution so we can, I'll give it to everybody.
Okay.
For a show hauls, calls here in next meeting.
He said he might make it back.
This is an activity center which already had some problems already.
Okay, Ms. Blaylock, do we need to read this into the minutes?
No, well, I will, at the end of the council meeting.
Okay.
I will read it at that time.
Okay. Thank you. Everybody has one? All right. Our work session roster for communication to Ms. Veronica McKenzie.
Good afternoon.
How you doing, ma'am?
Fine. My name is Veronica McKenzie. I'm the executive director of Successful Living Center Alzheimer's Adult Daycare Program. I want to first of all say thank you to the council, council individuals who supported and have been supporting our program, Councilman McKenzie and Councilman Graham and Councilman Genright. I really appreciate your past support. I am just coming today to thank you all for your support and also to inform you about a workshop that we're doing for caregivers of individuals with dementia or anybody taking care of someone with chronic long-term illnesses. It's called Caring and Sharing. It's the October thirteenth at Eastern Hills Baptist Church. That's the Thursday after, uh, Thursday. And I'm inviting everyone to come out and see what we're doing. It's gonna be an interactive program for caregivers, teaching them how to focus on themselves while they are taking care of their caregiving responsibilities. And I would ask for your support if you choose to support this event. We will be greatly, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
What's your budget for this event?
Our budget was $5,000.
Yes, ma'am. Have you signed up for, to, um, I know you were a vendor last year, but you have to refile to be a vendor for every budget year. Have you done that by chance?
I did it for this year. I just did it this year.
Yeah, I think it started over in October, but that's Mr. Weaver right there?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Randy, you can get with Mr. Randy. And if you can do that again, that would help.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKenzie. Mr. William Boyd, speak with us about New Year's Day Parade.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Well, eighteen years, um, related to board New Year's Day Parade. First, I want to thank those who, who, uh, supported the parade over the years at that time of year again. And I want to say this about this parade. This is the only parade in the state of Alabama that has a New Year's Day Parade on New Year's Day. And the mayor supports it, and some of the council members have supported it for over the years. And, and that's the cost. It's very expensive, around twenty, about twenty, about thirty-seven thousand dollars. And the county is a hundred percent behind the parade. And I'm just asking, y'all just did what you did last year. It'd be appreciative for those who, who, uh, who supported it. Some of you guys should be the second parade. Marsha Cici, we've been trying to get in contact with you a hundred times, but you know, I know your schedule's kind of tight, man, but we have reach out to you. So if y'all can, you know, please do so. We have to get these vans paid in advance before somebody else get them in another state. So that's one of the biggest expenses, you know. We, ten vans, that's five, that's five hundred dollars a van. And that's, that's five thousand plus the security of Montgomery, that's ready, four thousand, that's ready, nine thousand dollars, leave it, leave it a night and stuff, you know, just coming back to the city. So we appreciate it if y'all can do what you do. Y'all know how to do it.
All right.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd.
Thank you. All right. Uh, Mr. Chris Thomas, talk to us about the Matt's Gala.
Good afternoon, honorable councillors. My name is Christopher Thomas, representative of the M Transit. The M Transit has partnered with the Montgomery Transportation Coalition to create the inaugural M Gala. And, um, I, I think each of you hopefully didn't go to your spam, receiving an email with a, with a deck laying out the entire, uh, the event itself, who we are, will be honoring as well. You know, a few of the things that I'd like to make focus is the mission, you know, of the M Gala, and it's to highlight the city of Montgomery's evolution and recognize those who are leading the charge. So, um, uh, this is a follow-up from Ms. Sankey's request a couple weeks ago to ask for your support, each of your support within the M Gala.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? I think we're gonna be supported, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Stephen Tears, Montgomery Humane Society.
Hello. I am Stephen Tears. I'm the executive director of the Montgomery Humane Society. I just want to hand. The reason that I'm here today is I've, I've been in a few times and, um, prior to the fiscal 2023 budget being voted on and put in place and had several conversations with different council men and women. The, the Humane Society operates animal services, which is animal control and the housing of the animals. Um, and I think there was some confusion as far as how the budget works. I did look at the 2023 budget. I spoke to Betty Beville, uh, and I, I find, I think there's some confusion, so I, I broke it down on how the shelter looks at it and is, is hopefully as clear as it can be. We, we classify animal control, and if you remember in May, the addition is what Councilwoman Johnson, uh, worked with us on altering some ordinances, microchipping, licensing to breed. There were several others, and it required additional officers, and we worked through that budget. So that's what that, uh, for fiscal year 2022, we received three payments. That's what sixty-two thousand is. It was mid-year alter of the budget. And then animal holding. Where we're struggling is animal services, the Humane Society stray holding, court cases, felony cases, cruelty cases. All of those have been significantly higher, and they've continued to increase, resulting in a significant budget decrease, or deficit, excuse me. And, um, I want to say this, July, I sent out the budget request, and I'm not quite sure, um, I know who I sent it to, but I don't know if it made it to everybody. But we have about a $650,000 deficit. Now, I did go to the county. They did pay a part of it, and I think they've worked out something else with Ms. Beville as far as like that additional animal control. But we're still at a significant deficit of about $350,000. Please understand, this isn't the warm fuzzies. This is the things that we have to do. When a dog comes in, we have to vaccinate it. If it's sick, we have to treat it. If it's hit by a car, it has to go to the vet. We don't have the authority to destroy animals just because they cost a lot. And unfortunately, the only way to euthanize an animal in trouble is for the vet and myself to agree, and I, to agree, and I always defer to the vet. So essentially, I'm powerless as far as like what that animal's gonna cost us. A dog hit by a car could cost me $2,000, and I have no idea who the owner is. Uh, and unfortunately, I can't even hold them accountable for the bill because we are the client. In past years, we've just kind of buckled down. Medications are up a thousand percent. Not to be too specific, we utilize something called doxycycline on probably eighty-five percent of the animals to keep them healthy. That's up a thousand and nineteen percent. There's absolutely no way for me to cut expenses. I have to have certain things to operate. I have to have certain medications to adhere to the laws. So.
Mr.?
Yes, sir.
I have a question. I'm looking at your budget for FY 2023, and I'm seeing where you got a $400,000 increase for total animal services.
So, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you say.
One point four?
Yes, sir.
Versus, um, eight hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars in 2022?
Okay, right.
So that's basically about eight, well, almost a $600,000 increase.
So the difference is, is the additions that Councilwoman Johnson put in for animal control plus three hundred and fifty.
So what's your ask?
One point four, one five.
Oh, that's your ask?
That's, yeah, three hundred and fifty thousand will help me get to where I can operate and do what we're needed to by law. The nonprofit side, you, you don't amputate unless it's required at the point of surgery. You don't do heart room treatments. You don't do any of that. The nonprofit does that.
Okay, now let me ask you this. You know, we, we voted and passed the budget a couple weeks ago, right? So the budget actually closed.
Yes, sir. I, I put this before the council, long before you voted on it, and I think we were trying to work through it. And I was told not to worry about it. It would be handled. So I, I, I came in once, handed some paperwork and walked out. So that's why I haven't been in this position. I, I found out that you voted on the budget prior, yeah. I'm, I'm trying not to be disrespectful.
What happens if you don't get, what happens if you don't get this money?
We'll be out of money by April. We won't be able to take another dog in by April and legally do what we're supposed to. Now, it may push to May. Everything is dictated by what happens. It's, uh, we, we, we have to react to many of the things that we do. If a dogfight breaks out and we have a felony case, we have to react to that. Those dogs have to be treated, vetted, held for evidence. I've got a vicious dog case that's been in the shelter for, two dogs, four hundred and eighty-two days. By the ordinance, um, uh, well, actually, the city's owed $20,000 because it's under your contract.
And I heard you say that you go to court a great deal on some of this stuff.
Sure.
What are we owed and backpaid, would you guess?
I, I mean, I would have to pull that, but it's, it's considerable, but I don't. And again, no disrespect, I don't think anybody's paying attention to it. I think we got $400 last year restitution.
Go ahead, Mr. Boyd.
Mayor, is there, is there any way that we can help with the court cases as far as restitution? And I know, you know, there's a purview that you can and cannot tell judges, but I mean, you know, that's money that the city is missing out on that could help this shortcomings that they're having.
What, what restitution are we missing out on that we're not doing?
I think, go ahead.
So anytime there's a court case, Mr. Mayor, there's rest, if I take the dog to the vet, which we do multiple times, housing costs, feeding costs, I mean, there's vaccines, some of the court cases are, they stack up pretty quick. So for, for example, this, these two dogs that have been held for four hundred and eighty-two days while they're waiting to serve the owners is $20,000. But if we go to court, I would, nine times out of ten, they don't issue, they don't make that order. We just don't get it. It's, it's gone.
No, I, I think if that's, if that's happening and there's no legal, uh, reason behind it, they're just making that decision at their own discretion, then sure, we need to ask that. And I don't know if Ken is here, our court administrator, but I don't mind bringing that up with him and also mentioning that to presiding Judge Westrich.
Now, I can tell you, the few payments that we've have received, they've sent them to the shelter, and I've turned them away. I, it doesn't seem right that they would pay restitution directly to us and not have any kind of record with the court side.
Well, and the issue is when they're waiting in municipal court, they have to, municipal court has to serve the owner before the court can hear the case and then order restitution. And these owners are avoiding service. So we've got these dogs that they're housing for years. And, you know, I, we've even looked at and talked with Councilwoman Johnson extensively about the, the finances of this, but there's no, we've looked at the possibility of trying to do service by publication. Unfortunately, they have the right to do process. So.
Right.
We're in a bad situation where we can't do anything with the dogs, and the bills just keep piling up. And once they do, if they do ever get them served and they order them to pay restitution, they just aren't gonna pay it. They don't want the dogs back.
And on a, on a sidebar, if you, if you are an animal person at all, these, these dogs being in a cage that can't be walked, housed, touched, brushed, bathed, that's more relying on us being guilty of animal cruelty. Now, they get their food and water and medications, but because they're evidence, we can't walk them, we can't let them out. So they've essentially been in a cage for four hundred and eighty-two days.
Wow.
So that's the emotional side of it, but it, it gets costly. And again, I, I do apologize for, I know that the budget's been voted on, but I have been here, I have provided the information. I have been asked not to speak.
Okay.
Just taken care of. So that, that's why we're here now.
If, if, and one more question. If, if you were not to implement Marche's new ordinance that she came up with, would that help in this?
Well, I mean, one, it's already on the ordinance, and honestly, people are already chomping at the bit for us to enforce it, so.
Okay.
Probably not. The, the struggle we're having animal control, when we worked out the budget, is it is financed, it's good where it is, we're good with the contract of which it does need to be redone. It's just purely for housing animals. It's just outrageous. Our, today, and I, you know, we're, we're an open emission shelter. We euthanized sixty-five dogs today just to make space. Our dog runs has, we have a hundred and thirty-eight runs for stray hold. They fill up when their five days are up. Even if we've put 500 or 600 dollars, there's just no place to take them. No national organization, they're all full. Nobody has an answer on where to take them. And I'll be, if, if you've ever euthanized, it's not cheap either. And so we did sixty-five today. The drugs not cheap, the technicians aren't cheap. If a vet comes in, it's $400 an hour. So it's, um, it's just, it's honestly, it's overwhelming.
Steve, we hear you, and I think what we're gonna have to do, I just came out of committee, uh, what Mr. Johnson, Ms. Johnson had, we'll, we'll look at that in a committee to go back and see how can we offset to help you with this, even if it may take repealing. We already done. So we hear, we hear your cry, we'll see what we can do from a council standpoint.
Sounds good. I appreciate your time.
All right, thank you, sir.
Mayor, Mayor, is this something that we can look at maybe in the next month or two? Because.
Put it back in the committee.
Yeah, we can put it in the committee, but the bottom line is we're about to have some help with money, I think. And if he cannot take animals, April or May, we're gonna have dogs running around this city like crazy, and they're already running around like crazy. So is this something that we can go back and revisit and just look at?
I, I'll, I'll let y'all discuss it in committee, and after that, we'll, we'll talk it over.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Brian Kelly, Common Ground. How you doing, sir? Good evening.
Uh-oh. Yeah, yeah. All right, I'm not gonna touch it. Uh, yeah, I, thank you so much for allowing me to have a few minutes of your time. I'm here also with John Steiner. He's the board chairman of Common Ground Montgomery. I'm the executive director of Common Ground, and just wanted to come share an experience that we had with you that's been highly disturbing to me and concerning. Uh, this past Friday, with one of our teachers and one of the people dropping off the kids in Gibbs Village, um, about somewhere around four fifty, four fifty-five, we had, um, six children in a van turning into Gibbs with Ms. Lee, one of our teachers, dropping them off. And according to Ms. Lee, heard a gunshot, and a, uh, according to her, a bullet hole came through the side window about two inches above one of the children's heads. So she slammed on brakes, all the kids started screaming, they were screaming that people were shooting at them or whatever. She gets her wits about her, kind of speeds down the road, the window falls out at that point, and she begins to call back to us. And so we start calling 911 about, uh, first call was right at five o'clock. Second call was a few minutes later from two different staff. I arrived about 5:30, made two more calls to 911. The officer arrived about an hour and thirty minute, thirty-seven minutes later. We kept calling, we kept saying, hey, the people who we think did it are still standing out there. If somebody will please come, can you please come? Nobody showed up. They told us twice on the phone that they would have a supervisor call me back, which never happened. And so I'm just calling because they respond, I'm angry about a lot of things. I'm angry about what happened in the community. That's not okay. We've been doing this sixteen years. That's the first time we've had a, a van shot into or whatever happened at that magnitude, dropping kids off. I'm angry because the, the, a lot of people in the community, of course, with the police experiences showing up a lot of times, nobody's gonna tell you what happened. They're gonna let it go. You know, nobody's gonna snitch, nobody's gonna say anything, so I'm angry about that. But the thing I think we can all agree upon is an hour and a half is too long to wait for somebody to show up when we think a kids, you know, kids have been shot at in a van. That's what I'm upset about. And so all I, I'm, I'm for us, I'm for all of us, I'm for the police, I'm for everything. That can't be okay. That can't be acceptable. It can't be okay. I don't care if there's a shift change, I don't care if there's, um, you know, backup calls on 911. I don't, you can't wait an hour and a half for services when it's reported that there's a gunshot at children. That can't be okay. And so that's the only reason I'm here. Um, I'm upset, been upset all weekend. We've got kids that, we've got, the person driving the van was still in the hospital as a matter of fact of this morning, dealing with some things that may or may not be related to all the stress and things that she went through right after. Kids had an asthma attack, running out of the van, running inside, screaming, you know, had to go meet with every parent face to face that night in Gibbs and just kind of explain what happened. And I just need this not to be okay. I need, I need this not to be a number, I need it not to be dismissed. I need, that's what I need. I just need somebody to be mad enough to change whatever calls an hour and a half response time. That's the only reason I'm here.
Thank you.
Quick.
Go ahead, Mr. Mitch.
One, one question. I know you're upset, but, um, please contact Montgomery Housing Authority, Mr. Day. He's over, um, I guess their, their police department also, contact Glennis Tanner. She's the CEO of Montgomery Housing Authority. If it happened on their property, they have cameras, they have everything that we need. But please make sure that you show that same frustration to Montgomery Housing Authority. Please call them tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, and, and last thing I'll say is, look, I, I don't know what happened, how it happened, I just know what we reported and the experience we had. That's kind of where I am with it, you know, how it went down. I'm just going off of what the teacher told me when she dropped the kids off.
Chief, you hear, he won.
That was our experience, so, yeah.
I'm Chief Hall, I'm over at the investigations, and I'm working with Chief Barnes in reference to this, and I will agree with you, an hour and a half response time's not acceptable in any situation, and we're looking into that, see what occurred, and what we can do to make sure that doesn't happen again. This is still currently under investigation to see exactly what happens. We are working with the housing authority to pull any and all video that we have from that area, so we can prove, um, go after any appropriate charges in this case for any individuals for damages or anything else that occurred. We're still trying to sort together what, um, exactly what happened. Of course, it is a reported incident that we're following up on. So we are working on it, and I, and I have to agree that it's not a responsible, um, response time that will be corrected immediately.
And Mr. Kelly, again, I, you know, I, I spoke with you on Friday, and, and we all agree here, you know? Um, but that is the reason why I didn't contact the housing authority, because Chief Abra DeSherry, I mean, that was a part of their investigation. They will pull that, so I wanted them to do that. You know, that's the reason why. But Mr. Counselor Mitchell is right, absolutely, let them know your frustration you had as well, but, um, I do believe that our city, uh, MPD will pull all of that video and get as much, and we want to make sure something happens in response to this and not just, we heard you. So we're working on it. We appreciate you, though, for being here and making sure it's just not something we talked about, and then we're waiting for a phone call. So thank you so much for being here, and just know we hear you, and my phone number, you have it. If you ever have any other problems or any other concerns about this matter or anything else, I'm gonna call away. Thank you. Thank you for what you do with our children.
All right, Ms. Regina Davis.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I would like to first give honor to God, who's the head of all our lives, and this is my daughter, Darcelle, and she's gonna help, you know, speak about the issues that's I used to manage the crystal on Fairview. I used to cook for Judge Price. You know, all of them just come through Crystal, you know. And like I said, it got to the point where they trying, it's not a full house on the street that I live on. And, you know.
What they call, what they call it, how they call it?
Shine House, Jew Joint, and all owned by ex-fellow. They can't get nothing in their name, they gotta get it under somebody else's name. And I've reached out to Montgomery Police Department, everybody, everybody, you know, I've talked to, you know, to have you talk to your councilman. So I talked to Ms. McKennys, in which he was a deal, and I was grieving over my nephew, Gary Reynolds, and the mayor, he spoke, you know, on television in his funeral, and I want to thank you for it, sir. But like I said, I just want to know, what can I do about, because everybody can't take up and move out the Pike Road, Halyon, and all that. And I, everybody come, you talk to your councilman? So yes, I'm here today to talk to my councilman.
And we totally, I hear you, and it's not okay, just like it's not okay with this Common Ground incident, it's not okay to have these incidences on residential streets on a daily, weekly basis.
Tonight, Taco Tuesday night, you probably can't even get down the street tonight.
So can we, do we, I wrote it down, but I don't have it with me, the address, your address specifically, but the area is Booker Street, right?
Yeah, Auburn Street.
Ms. McGinnis, I have it here, it's 373 Auburn Street.
Okay.
That's her address.
Yeah. And Mr. Calhoun, you know, Greg, we come from the same place up there on Fairview.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
And what we'll do is, if anybody has any information on MPD, but after this working session, we'll talk with the MPD officers and see what avenues we can do. We have been somewhat successful on the council, a handful of us with disruptive property ordinances. If there are, if there's enough evidence to support it, and we can get it approved through the legal department, we can file for a disruptive property ordinance that we can go after the homeowners that are responsible for their tenants' bad behavior. Yes, ma'am.
One of the major contributing factors is that there are a few, I think it's prime real estate because there are a lot of empty lots that are there, so they're being utilized as, as meeting spots, you know, where they gather. And times that MPD has responded, especially for the noise, you know, they said their hands are kind of tied because it's private property, although it doesn't belong to any of the individuals that are on it during the call, so.
So that's unfortunate. I don't have an answer for it. We do have noise ordinances on the books, just like we have litter ordinances and soliciting ordinances and a lot of ordinances that I feel personally that we're kind of sweeping under the rug right now, which is not good. I think the best route that we could possibly take is a disruptive property ordinance that goes straight to a court-type situation with the property owner. If there's enough evidence, and it has been documented with MPD, if there's a call, 911 call, or several 911 calls, we can enact that process. But it is a lengthy process to go through with the legal department to do disruptive property ordinance. So I think the best thing that we can do is get with MPD after this working session and come up with a plan with specific addresses to really focus on and just take one step at a time to address it. Any other questions?
One other thing about the ATVs and like motocross bikes, or I've been told that they are not supposed to be driven on.
Yes.
On city streets, but we've had officers respond, and they're literally have witnessed, you know, I have them on security cameras, I have them on my camera, and told that, well, if I didn't see it, I can't address it. I've had officers stand literally on the porch, and the person's driving back and forth in front of them, and that's happened on a couple occasions.
Yes, yes, ma'am, and I've been told the same thing, and it goes back to, I don't, I'm not MPD. I think we have an ordinance, I saw somebody on McGee Road on a dirt bike going through traffic, crossways, and I just, I don't, I don't have an answer. Hopefully Chief Hall can bring some light to what the possibilities are for the ATVs.
To address, to answer your questions, yes, ATVs and all that are illegal. It's a state law, they cannot be on the streets. Now, a couple of things, we'll work on this every weekend. We have details specifically to this, addressing these ATVs and getting them off the streets, and we do get them, we issue citations, as well as impound the ATV for being on the roadways. Now, one of the things that we have to take into consideration is we're not gonna pursue the ATVs because of the safety concerns of that individual and the citizens around them. So rest assured that that is a concern of ours, and we are dealing with it every day, and we actually have special details every week that we're moving around to try and address those and address that. Do so, and I'll make sure Auburn Street is included in that area that we're focused on specifically to combat those ATVs.
Okay, because that's also part of one of the trouble houses?
Yes, ma'am.
He has about three or four of them, and people, they're just all, so it's not unrelated.
If it is related, or it sounds like it's all related, then that makes the avenue of a disruptive property situation even, make even more sense. And we have had success with disruptive property ordinance. So we will get together, we will get with MPD, we will track down all the data, and then try to pursue that to hold the landlord and the property owner accountable for his tenant's actions. If it happens to be them, somebody's got to be accountable in court. So that's, that's what we can do on the council side of things. Hopefully it'll make a difference. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGinnis. Thank you, counsel. I have, that ends.
Hey, C.C. Before we, before we get done, hey, Randy, I was talking to Randy on the phone the other day. Any money that we spend through contingency 618, bond, the bond money, any money that we send Betty an email, we need to copy Randy on it because he's the gatekeeper of every bit of that money, even that money in the budget that we got.
Okay.
So just FYI, just because he's gonna be the gatekeeper of all that. We were talking about that the other day.
Okay. All right, all right, counsel, that concludes our roster for communication, but I've been informed that we need to go into an executive session to discuss project agreements from the chamber, so I need a motion session.
Motion to go into executive session for.
What do we discuss?
Project agreement, economic development project agreement.
Not the one that's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda. It's on the agenda. Number four on the agenda.
Ellen.
Are we not allowed to do that?
Someone.
Is it two?
Are we not allowed to do it?
It's two. One is. It's. I think it's. It's not the one on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay. So I motion to go in an executive meeting.
Ms. Bellinger, what is it? Four.
Number seven.
Unanimous? Is it unanimous?
Yes.
Yes, Mrs.
Will not reconvene?
No, ma'am, we'll go, we'll come back and possibly start the council meeting immediately following the executive session.
Then you can hit the gavel.